We will call the town's select board regular meeting Thursday, May 16th, 2013 to order at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval, approval of minutes, 5:00, 9:13, which was a special meeting, and 5:00, 9:13, our regular meeting. Warrants, mail, old business, a couple of our town auditors. We will have to have a short executive session on a contract, hydro contract. And with that, anything to be added, or if not, I'll take a motion on approval of the agenda?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes, 5:09, the special meeting at 6:00 o'clock.
So carried.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our regular meeting at 7:00 o'clock, same date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, 5:12, 13 to 5:17, 13, in the amount of $4,466.15. Accounts payable, 5:17, 13, in the amount of $64, 21.10. A little low this month or the week, which is nice. You had lawn mowing, some grater teeth in there. Payroll transfer are your large items. That will be our warrants. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. We have an excess weight permit for Jacob Melville. On a road form, he's signed it. His papers are ordered. Fee is paid.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have advertised for a town service officer appointment. We have an applicant here, Barb Sussinger from Powell, has applied. What is your pleasure?
Motion, planer?
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess we're out, assign that. Okay, a question that was brought up last week about our town liability for temporary dog kennels. We have a letter from our insurance carrier that the town's general liability does extend to cover bodily damage and property damages that may arise from the existence of temporary kennels established by the town or animal control officer, by the animal control officer. So, as I stated before, we have a very original policy, and it is covered.
One step down.
Yes. I got a letter the other day from our local roads informing me that Casey Madison had attended the construction math workshop in Rutland on Tuesday, April 30th, 2013. So, they were pleased with that attendance. We are also. Okay, we have a letter from Christina Chenal. It said, "This letter is to inform the select board. I, Christina Chenal, will not, will only be working on the active physical year of 2013 as an auditor, as I was elected into office on May, March, excuse me, of 2013. I do not wish to be involved in any of the prior findings from errors occurring in the years of 2009 to 2012, as I feel these years in question have been closed and they are audited by the Bonadino Group. To my understanding, they are no longer sufficient errors or findings. In conclusion, I do not wish to have my name attached to any group auditor letters at this time. I am taking a neutral stance. Thank you. Also, due to my other job, I am unable to attend most select meetings that are held on Thursday night by the select board. Sincerely, Christina Chenal." I applaud her opinion on working within the current year. And that is our mail, folks.
Can you pass this minutes on for signature?
Yes. Okay, under old business, we have our two other auditors here this evening, which we'd ask to come and bring information of their findings.
So I just want to open this with saying that along with auditing the financial position of the town, the auditors are also expected to audit all of the various departments and the policies of the town. In doing that, I've given you a copy of the current personnel policy that's in place, and I have a list of questions that I'd like you to answer from that policy.
Let me take a moment just to look at this before we get into that. All right. I don't feel any problem with this one, one, two, three, four, five, six, around 10 questions. Board wants to entertain answering these this evening, and anything that we don't have a current answer for, we can get back with.
As far as the third line down in the shoes?
Well, no, we don't need to get in right now. I'm just, I'm asking, do we want to approach this right now, this evening?
I don't really.
I would just think, this is just an exercise for you folks, because sooner or later, someone is going to come in here and make you redo your policy. Your policy is very, very vague, and a lot of the problems that were caused from 2009 forward that we found were caused a little because of the vagueness of the policy. You know, if you look at the first question, how much vacation time does an employee who has been employed with us for seven years get? And you look on page two of your policy, under B, employees who have completed five full years of physical employment are entitled to 10 days vacation, which would mean each subsequent calendar year of years 6 through 10. If you look on page three, there's another schedule with no date on it that says if you are here for five full years, you get 15 days.
If I'm not mistaken, aren't we doing our policies right now?
Yep.
That you've been in the process for the last?
It's been in the process for close to a year.
I was gonna say.
Every time we get going on it, we run into changes in regulations and so on and so forth.
So that answers one of those questions of, well, policy isn't in the process of being updated and brought into specs along with some other policies.
Then some of these questions should help you decide what you need to put in your policy, because?
I started with this.
These are questions, right. But these are questions that I've noticed in auditing the payroll. You know, when you go back, how much sick day does a person get if he's been here for a year, a full-time employee?
A year?
Well, they're supposed to get 24 hours a year, three days a year, there allows for sick time.
Oh, sick time, you're told.
Sick time, right. Some of our people have gotten 32 hours. Does everybody get an employee, $100 towards shoes purchased from Family Footwear? Now, I know that you guys, not all that long ago, passed in your meeting a motion to have the transfer station, the road crew, and the wastewater employees be allowed to purchase the footwear, but that's nowhere in your policy.
It is under our OSHA approval on working in these places. I mean, that's part of the standard that we have to?
So as part of your OSHA approval, then you do have a personal protective equipment program in effect at each one of these locations?
I'm assuming that we do, yes. Because that's the law that we have to have this stuff.
Okay, and I can check that out easily. The question of health insurance, who gets health insurance?
Full-time employees.
And?
And people left.
I want health insurance.
Yeah, we all do.
Tell me why I can't get it.
There are, I'm trying to think what, I'd have to do some research. I know there's some grounds on that that were changed, and I'm not sure of the basis on how they were done, but I know the original status is full-time employment.
Well, you have three people that are on your insurance that are not full-time employees.
Right.
And if they pay the entire premium, that wouldn't be an issue?
There was something to do with pay or something. I'm not clarified to answer that totally and be correct on it, so.
What percentage of the premium does the employee pay of the health insurance?
That would depend on which position you're talking again. Well, are we talking full-time or part-time?
Wire.
Because there are different scales on full-time employees.
I, Steve, I don't think that you, I don't believe that's true.
Well, I think it is, and I'm not sure. That's why I said I wasn't going there.
Okay.
Because I'm not familiar with that particular.
No, I totally understand, and I also asked you to, you know, to get this off of the personnel policy that I gave you, so there's nothing on there. You know, why do some people who refuse health insurance get a stipend and others don't?
Well, depends when this was done. Some of these questions are not going to be answered, because it goes back before I was on the board on that, so I'm not sure.
Is the day after Thanksgiving a new paid holiday?
That would depend on when it comes, I don't know.
Well, look at the list of holidays, you know, and all I can say is that, you know, the, there are people that took that as a paid holiday, and you approved the warrant, so I'm just, you might want to get that under control. If an employee usually works a six-hour day, how many hours of bereavement time will they get paid for their bereavement? Their, it's my understanding, they're available for three days bereavement if a close relative, an immediate relative. Do they get eight hours of pay? If they normally don't work an eight-hour day? Why is most of the overtime on the road crew paid to the highest paid person, and why would we ever allow anyone to work 50 hours of overtime?
When was that?
Approved warrant.
I have to look at the warrant, I don't have the due?
50 hours?
I have it.
50 hours of overtime.
50 hours of overtime plus the regular pay.
You're talking one or others?
Yes, I'm sure it is, but nonetheless, if you have four people on the road crew, why does one person have to work 50 hours when the other people only work eight or 10? In July, the board voted to increase wages, and, you know, looking in the minutes, I couldn't find an amount in the minutes, but it appears by looking at the paychecks and the increases that most employees got a 1.5% increase. There was one employee that got 12.5%. Why?
I believe that was a reduction in hours.
Without a reduction in pay? Why?
Okay, we're talking last year, okay? I'm trying to think what it was, yep.
Yeah, this is July. I mean, this is, this is.
Right, that was last fiscal, yep.
Right. What's our policy on tardiness? You know, there is a policy on tardiness in your personnel policy, but I can't see if anything has ever been done about the people that, the ones that actually do have a time clock punching in.
I wasn't aware of it being abused tremendously, so whatever that is, I'm sure it hasn't.
Well, you might want to just keep it in the back of your head, to just look, you know, when you see the warrants and you do the warrants, just check that, because if, one week, one person was tardy for 27 minutes, tardies, and that's, you know, to me, that's unacceptable. Why don't we have time clocks at each location that our employees work?
I think we've gone through that before and answered that question.
And the answer would be?
It wasn't necessary, it wasn't feasible.
Okay.
If we're going to have employees come back to a place, in particular, one that would have to, well, actually, two different divisions leave their house, and they could actually go to the area that needs attending to, instead of have to go back and punch in and then go there, it seems a little foolish.
Well, it would seem to me that the way to handle that would be to have the supervisor sign the time card, if that were the case. Or do you have all of the employees going to a different location rather than?
I would assume, depending on what the situation is, in a winter storm or so on. Darcy for one, going out on different calls in different circumstances. If we had 100 people abusing the system, I don't see where this is abused. There may be moments here where there's time used that doesn't correspond to the exact moment, but I don't see a big abusive thing here. If you're talking minutes, somebody punching in 27 minutes late, do you in fact know that they left at noon for lunch? Did they come back 10 minutes early and finish the job they were doing?
Well, the fact of the matter is, they don't punch out for lunch, so you don't know.
Right.
When they leave for lunch or when they come back.
Exactly. I've worked at places.
I wasn't referring to the wastewater treatment, because they don't have a time.
No, but I was using that for an example.
Right.
But I'm just saying, some of these things, I've watched in different areas, and I don't oversee these things. I do keep a half an eye on them, because it's my tax dollars paying them too, and, but I'm not going to scrutinize them for a dollar if I think that they've done an adequate job. And if they stop and get a coffee at 10 o'clock in the morning, that doesn't bother me either.
Well, everyone deserves a break. I'm not, I'm not saying anything about that.
No, but what?
But I am saying?
If they're doing their job.
If you have somebody that punches in late consistently every day of the week, why do you not have a discipline policy that says this person would at least get spoken to?
Well, usually, each one of these departments has somebody over them.
Right.
If there's a problem with that particular party, and that particular supervisor feels there's a problem, he deals with it. And if he can't deal with it, then he brings it to us. We have not heard that problem.
How do we not know this particular individual called his supervisor the night before or that morning, said, "Hey, I'm going to be late, I have an issue at home"? I do it at my work.
Well, you're, you're right. I don't know.
We don't know. The supervisor?
After week after week, day after day after day.
I mean, that supervisor ain't came.
Two minutes here, five minutes there, 10 minutes there, you know.
Is this the same person?
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, but, you know, you can look that up, I mean, you can find out who it is.
But as far as the rest of these questions, I just table everything, because we've come in here tonight and?
One other question, I just wanted to know what the $20,000 administrative charge was that was in the road fund.
We're getting all these fire, questions fired at us, and we have no time to?
We don't mean to fire them at anybody. You're welcome to, you know, take the time to answer these when you can.
No, we're going to. I just wanted to scan through this, because it was a short list, and forget we do that. Many questions we can't answer, we will find answers still.
Like I said, you know, the whole deal with the personnel policy, and honestly, to be fair to your employees, to all of you, all of the employees, and the elected officials, now that's another thing that you should be fine, is an elected official considered an employee here?
Well, they are an employee, they're an employee of the town.
Not an elected official.
None whatsoever.
They're an employee of the town, the taxpayers, they're an employee of the taxpayer.
According to the federal government, they're an employee of the municipality, the federal government. According to the state government, an elected official is not an employee of the town.
Well?
I do believe that you can make them an employee, but they're not considered generally an employee of the town.
Well, they're hired by, voted into office by the people.
I understand this.
So, it's like us and it's like you.
There's a difference between an employee and a non-employee.
Right.
And, you know, a subcontractor, so. So the only other thing that I have that I want to give you?
Did you ask them that last?
I did. I asked them what the administrative charge was in the road, they're going to look it up, in the road fund. This is a copy of a personnel policy that I took off the computer from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's an excellent resource. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns, they have all kinds of, all kinds of really good ideas on policies, and this is all-inclusive. It is a writable file, so when you get into it, you can actually write in it and put in, you know, whatever you decide to put in it, if you choose to use it, and it's been through the legal system, because they wouldn't put it on the, as a policy if it wasn't.
Where did you, you researched on some of this policy? Were you through City, Towns, and Leagues?
Yeah, I had a copy of.
That's what I thought you'd gotten yours from when you started this, yes.
And you said have a copy of that one?
This has been in the works for quite a while. Okay, with that?
I have one other item in our session with the auditors here, if I might. I have a letter I addressed it to each and every one of you, dated today, and I have the FSLA timekeeping requirements attached. It's about seven or eight pages, and I did not make copies, but it's available, it's from right off the FSLA, it's concise. This is very brief, and I do not expect an answer, I don't expect any back and forth, we're not going to get, I don't want to give a big hassle about this, I just want, it's at this time, it's our time, the auditor's time to appear before the board, and I want to give it in to you. And it's addressed to everybody. Attached is Chapter 13 of the SLA Record Keeping Requirements required by each and every employer, the town of Powell, as an employer. It has been brought to your attention that an FSLA rule violation is occurring at the wastewater treatment facility by allowing the personnel not indicating their starting and ending times of their work, particularly overtime, with particular emphasis in regards to Saturday and Sunday overtime. This practice should be stopped immediately, and that employees follow the FSLA guidelines as well as the employer, the town of Powell. And in here, also, please read the attached Chapter 13, FSLA Exempt Employees, paragraph. Please pay particular attention to the last sentence, this is very important. In addition, the employer, the town of Powell, must maintain records documenting the basis on which wages are paid in sufficient detail to permit calculations for each pay period of the exempt employee's total compensation, including fringe benefits. And it is in the minute that the information you'll be getting. For our employees, Madison and Sharapa, this means that the payroll registry, as well as their check stubs retained in payroll warrants, must contain holiday leave with pay, sick leave with pay, vacation leave with pay, so that the FSLA regulation is complied with, and so that the town of Powell's annual report reflects the true amount of these fringe benefits paid these employees, which presently it does not. Presently, nothing under the FSLA regs prevents employee Sharapa from indicating on her time sheet start and end times, vacation days, sick time, and holiday pay. The FSLA is not a suggestion but the law of the land, and Powell must comply with it both for the protection of its employees and the town of Powell. Chapter 14, which I don't have here, of the FSLA outlines enforcement and possible sanctions, fines, for continual violations in these regulations, submitted by your auditors. And that is attached, did you like it, Steve?
Yes. I'm going to have our administrator make copies of it, so we turn with the board members.
Good.
As this, and we will read through this, go from there.
I think that concludes what we?
Is that all you have?
That's all we have.
I have one question.
Yes.
You were sent an email and bringing everything forward on this?
It wasn't an email, it was a letter.
A letter from 2009 to 212.
Right.
Is it here?
We answered that letter on April 22nd, 2013. You didn't have the courtesy to read the letter. Do you have the letter with you that we sent to the board?
I don't.
Could Lynn get a copy of that letter, maybe, possibly? And read it, it wasn't read in the open session. That letter is very specific.
What's, if I'm not mistaken, the letter came and you got a letter in return, if I'm not mistaken?
Right, but our letter is pretty specific. Your letter, I don't know where, your letter was, seemed to be?
Our letter, I think, went back to the theory of what we asked for and come to this meeting with.
Right.
And are you telling me that you did not bring that information forward?
No, we did not.
You did not?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to, again, we've played with this for quite a time.
We're not playing with it anymore, so you don't have, it's done.
Good, all right. That I appreciate.
It's out of our?
It's other people's problems, not ours.
Because we are, if this board will vote in the next second or two, for the third time to end this 2009 fiasco till now.
You can, you can vote all you want, Steve.
Well, we're going to right here, because we do have the right to do that.
We just want to know that, want you to know that the auditors have taken other avenues.
Well, you can take other avenues, but I'm going to tell you right now, if this board says tonight, we're done, at 2009, if you're investigating in 2009, you're doing it, and you're all?
We're all done. We're all done investigating.
Okay. I'm going to call that.
Well, we're using other avenues.
We're not, we're not, don't even worry about it right now, we're not even going to go there. What I'd like is a motion that we again end this now, 2009, as they said they're done?
Right, we are done.
We say we're done.
Can I give you a, would you?
Just a moment, I got a motion I want to hear. I want a motion that we're ending this, no more 2009.
I'm agreeable with that.
Physical year.
We spent too much money on it already.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
We have a second?
Motion end it.
Yes. All in favor on the motion?
I mean, there you had one auditor saying she ain't working on it, so.
I know. I need, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Well, no, one second. Okay, that's done.
I just have one thing to say. This is what we came up with at all. And we felt that that was serious enough for us to sit down with you people and go over this.
Again, you've drawn another figure out of the sky.
No, I'm not.
No.
We asked for this stuff.
Where are your facts?
We want to see.
We went from 20, we went to 25, we went to 10 to 15.
I can do that, too.
Now you're up to 40.
We've watched the meeting.
What's that number, written on there?
Doesn't really matter, that number. We've watched the meeting of?
The public media asked that you display that number for us, please?
Sure. It's $43,864.72 estimate for the four years.
Not that it's an estimate.
We watched the meeting of, I believe it was the 18th, and the gentleman's missing, Rich here, recommended that we come in in detail and present, and present, that was his word, and present our findings to you. We were prepared to do that. We spent a lot of time making the copies that were each and every one of you, we were prepared to go over each and every one of them. And then you did not read our letter. Comprehension is a problem in this office. You did not read our letter of April 22nd. No, that's too bad.
Excuse me, Ray, but I think there's the problem with what you just? Excuse me, Ray, but I think there's, the problem with what you just said is not our problem. You just cannot say that you can just go and do the current thing. You gotta go back and to make when Christ was a pup and work your way forward.
Right.
When we agreed several times, more than one time, two or three, that that was gonna stop, and you agreed, okay, we made, we passed motions, it's on the holidays, it's in the minutes, it's gonna be ridiculous. And I understand that you think that everything is immune to you, basically, by your attitude and so on and so forth. However, the select board has to follow statutes, and the board of auditors follows statutes. So this thing with 2009, and that statute states you're only supposed to be doing the current year. There's a statute right in your little manual.
We are, we are doing the current warrants now, we've been doing them coming in here on Tuesdays, and we are remaining current with all our activities.
That's great, right.
Thank you.
Where did the figure for the $48,000, $40,000 come?
2009 to 2012.
I rest my case.
And again, it's an assumption, it's not a proven figure.
We have, like you said, it's, we're not gonna bring this issue up again, we're not-
And I'm glad, because that figure's bounced, that's the highest it's been.
And it might even go higher.
Yeah, well, hopefully it don't go any further next, you just said it over.
Well, if we're done with it, how can it go higher?
Well, we're hopeful that, you know-
My question is, why is, why is our auditors didn't come up with that?
Well, I'm, I would find that-
Other auditors, I should say.
But that part's over, we're done, hopefully. We are working in-
We still want to be here the third, third meeting of the month.
And that's perfectly fine, any findings-
We watch that times, and we'd like to, you know, possibly give us some answers on these things.
Any findings that you have in our current physical year, we're more than willing to see the questions, see the answers, that's not-
We have found a couple of questions that need to be addressed at the next time we get together here in the current year, and about donating time. And we, I thought we had covered this, whether there'd be no donating time, but we have found a serious flaw in that policy, so.
As an auditor, I got a question. On one of these papers you gave us on people, too many days, okay?
To what?
Too many days, too many sick days, or whatever, okay? He's on salary, I'm just curious, and how this goes, he's on salary, what's the difference if he gets eight hours regular time or if it's eight hours sick time? He's on salary.
The thing is, it wasn't sick in, it wasn't sick in vacation or vacation, it wasn't sick in vacation, it was sick in regular. He was paid for regular work. Let's say, let's say you work for the road.
Yep.
And you work Monday through Friday, and you get paid 40 hours, but you were on vacation, actually. So you come in, you get your check for 40 hours straight time, fine, you still, still got your 40 hours vacation left, don't you?
But what I'm saying, it really don't matter if he's a salary anyways, because he gets that semi-mo every week.
We're not talking about that.
Well, if he were to leave-
Yeah, I understand that.
If he were to leave, he would have accumulated 40 hours of vacation time that he already got paid for.
Right.
He should not have it, he's gonna get paid for it twice.
What it, I think really what, and, and you know, to end this conversation, and you, like Steve said, he's correct, we've been around this a long time, we have been trying since October, I have been trying to sit down with you people. But just on this, this example, if I might, if an employee gets 24 hours sick pay a year, and that's a given for everybody here, and they can accumulate it to 80 hours, and they can carry that over. How in the hell is it possible for an employee to use 96 hours in one year? How is it possible for an employee to use 400-plus hours in annual leave in a year? Now, without accumulation, and accumulation isn't there.
That's vacation.
Vacation. Why is it that, you know, well, there's just so many, because it's out of, we-
I understand, it should be used or lose it, but.
Hopefully, our new policies will correct some of these things as we put them together, and I look forward to you bringing us information as we go forward.
Yeah.
On ways to improve the way we do business currently, so we don't get into this air of problems where we can work together to the good of the town.
Right, we're gonna be doing what we did here tonight. We outlined the FSLA regs and got the copies of them so that you can see for yourselves to make up your decisions by the law. You know, so we have another situation that we are looking, we're researching right now through the IRS regs and also the FSLA regs, but we will bring that to you when we get it. And a change is gonna have to be made. You're gonna have to say, okay, these people are giving me this great scoop, and you're gonna have to change it. But we thank you for this time, we appreciate this guy.
Thank you.
We'll do it.
Okay, we have one more thing on our agenda, which is a contract that some of the wording has changed in, so we have to call a short executive session, so everybody get up to speed on reading the change in this and feel what their status is.
Motion going to executive session?
All in favor?
Aye.